Hello, everyone, and welcome to this Federalist Society virtual event. My name is Marco J. Lloyd, and I'm the Assistant Director of Practice Groups with the Federalist Society. Today, we're excited to host a litigation update on Boston Parent Coalition for Academic Excellence Read a School Committee for the City of Boston, featuring Christopher Kaiser and William Trackman. Chris is Senior Attorney at Pacific Legal Foundation, where he represents clients in property rights and equality before the law issues. He has published law review articles in the William &amp; Mary Environmental Law Review and the Federalist Society Review. He's authored op-eds for a number of different publications. A graduate of Notre Dame Law School, he clerked for the Honorable Daniel A. Mannion of the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals and the Honorable Thomas D. Schroeder of the Middle District of North Carolina. William Trackman is the General Counsel for Mountain State's Legal Foundation. Previously, he was appointed to serve in the Department of Education as Deputy Assistant Secretary in the Office for Civil Rights. He is also Chair of the Colorado Federalist Society. He's the Vice Chair of the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights's Colorado Advisory Board and Adjunct Professor at the University of Denver Stern College of Law. After graduating from UC Berkeley Law School, he clerked for the Honorable Harris Harts of the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals. If you'd like to learn more about today's speakers, their full bios can be viewed on our website, bedsoc.org. If you have a question at any point in today's program, please enter it into the Q&amp;A function at the bottom of your Zoom window. We will do our best to answer as many as we can. Finally, I'll note that, as always, the Federalist Society takes no position on particular legal or public policy issues, and all expressions of opinion are those of the speakers. With that, thank you for joining us today, and the floor is yours.
Thanks so much, Marco. Happy to have you here with us today, Chris. We're looking forward to an exciting discussion. We'll probably talk for about 15 to 20 minutes for those in the audience. And so if you have a question, go ahead and drop it in the Q&amp;A box. I think we'll have a chance to get to quite a few questions today about the case that we're talking about, which is Boston Parent Coalition for Academic Excellence versus the School Committee for the City of Boston. Chris, normally when we're doing these webinars, it's often about a Supreme Court case that comes down or an issue that's still pending before the court that they may decide to take. In this case, it's a denial of certiorari, which is a little bit of a unique posture for us. Do you want to tell us a little about how we got here and now, what the current status of the case is?
Yeah, thank you. So unfortunately, the Supreme Court denied our petition for certiorari a week ago. And that closed about three, three and a half years of litigation on this case. So I'm just going to give a little bit of background on the case for those of you who might not be as familiar. It involves the three exam schools in the city of Boston, which includes Boston Latin School, which is the oldest operating high school in the United States, spending around since 1635. These are all top schools in the U.S. News &amp; World Report high school rankings. And for years, they used a test called the I S E E, which is the same test that the New England Prep Schools use to admit students. And it was considered a very rigorous admissions criteria that separated these schools out from the regular public schools in Boston. But in the heat of 2019 and 2020, the School Committee decided that it was going to overhaul the admissions policy with the explicit goal of racial balance. And that meaning to decrease the percentage of Asian Americans and white students and increase the percentage of Black and Hispanic students who would be admitted to the exam schools. And so throughout 2019 and 2020, there was a working group that was convened that modeled several possibilities of how to create this racial balance. And what they ended up coming up with and proposing to the school board, the school committee, was a zip code quota that would essentially reserve 80% of the seats at the exam schools by equally between the Boston's 29 zip codes. And they also, with the excuse of the COVID pandemic, which a lot of schools used at that point to not have standardized testing, they got rid of the I S E E. And so the only objective criteria remaining was the GPA. So essentially, the new system became a zip code quota where each zip code had a different cutoff score for what was required to get into these exam schools. And so the modeling actually was born out, and the percentage of Asian and white students decreased from 61% before, when it was just when it was the I S E E and no zip code quota, to 49% with the zip code quota. And particularly certain neighborhoods like West Roxbury, which is predominantly white, and Chinatown, which is predominantly Asian American, were extremely limited by the zip code quota.
In most cases, we're thinking about direct racial preferences or direct racial discrimination. So Supreme Court decided Students for Fair Admissions last year, saying you can't give a tip, right, as you're evaluating a student's application for admission to college. Obviously, there's plenty of cases involving strict scrutiny where a federal contract preference may go to an owner who is non-white. Here, it's a little bit different, though, because the school isn't offering preferences per se to individual applicants who are not white or not Asian. They're doing this zip code thing where they are trying to, I guess you might call a racial gerrymander in terms of getting a different racial makeup of the school. Is that the same in your eyes? And are there cases addressing whether there's a difference between those two formulas?
Yeah, that's a good question. So one of the things that these school boards and school committees who have been adopting these plans have considered is that they want to avoid strict scrutiny because, for the most part, and especially after Students for Fair Admissions, the schools are not going to win under strict scrutiny. And so one of the ways they have chosen to try to avoid strict scrutiny is by not using explicit preferences, but by using what we consider to be proxies for race in these admissions plans. And here, the zip codes were not, it doesn't take much imagination to see how they worked. And the school committee members themselves were actually very upfront about why they were using the zip code plan in this case. Three of them particularly spoke about that they wanted more proportionality specifically to increase the number of Black and Hispanic students to get in and specifically also to decrease the number of Asian American students to get in. And so, yeah, it's an extra, what I would say is it's an extra burden because you don't automatically get strict scrutiny when there's not an explicit racial classification. But you can still show that the discrimination under the Arlington Heights multi-factor test. And if you, there are cases that say, if you show that, then you can get strict scrutiny. So our theory of the case is that it was that, under Arlington Heights, this is intentional discrimination against Asian Americans and white applicants. And because of that, then the burden should have shifted to the school committee to prove that the plan satisfied strict scrutiny. But we never reached the strict scrutiny aspect of this case because we could not show in the district court or the First Circuit under the rules that were applied in those cases and in those courts that there was discriminatory intent.
Well, so in these cases, let's take a step back. In these cases where there's obvious race discrimination because it's part of a policy or the government acknowledges that they're thinking about race as they're making individual decisions, those are going to get strict scrutiny. You mentioned a case called Arlington Heights, which is about where the policy actually doesn't say anything about race. There's no racial classification on its face. And yet, the motivation behind the policy is about race and maybe even creating a disparate impact, which is the idea that you'll get a different racial balance if you enact a policy. It sounded like you had some smoking guns here with the evidence from the school district members. Why wasn't that enough to basically get you right into strict scrutiny if these text messages and other documents were proving your case for you?
The thing that set this case apart, yeah, was the fact that the First Circuit and the district court both acknowledged that this plan was chosen specifically to adjust and change the racial demographics of the exam schools. And the district court found that the three of the seven members exhibited racial animus and called the text message that you mentioned racist. And nevertheless, these courts found that we couldn't satisfy Arlington Heights and get strict scrutiny. And in the First Circuit, the main reason for that was that the court adopted a vision of disparate impact that is tethered to the racial makeup of the applicant pool rather than what we advocated for, which would have been simply an analysis where you look at what happened before, and then when the policy is enacted, if the groups that you are arguing were discriminated against experienced a decline, then that is disparate impact. That was our argument. The school committee argued that the baseline should be the racial proportion of the applicant pool and that they were essentially decreasing disparate impacts. Their theory was that because Asian and white applicants were overrepresented before the plan was enacted, that bringing them down closer to their racial balance in the applicant pool was actually reducing disparate impact. And for this theory, they essentially relied on Title VII Employment Discrimination Cases disparate, under the Disparate Impact Provision of Title VII, where the explicit, the explicit assumption in these cases is that the pool of employees who get the job or maintain the job should be racially similar to the demographics of the pool of candidates.
Yeah, that seems like a wild theory to me. So your theory is that if you're targeting the racial balance and you're intentionally reducing the racial population of Asians or whites, that should be enough. And here, it sounds like the First Circuit said, yes, you can target Asians and whites so long as you don't target them so much that they drop below their percentage of the applicant pool. So if they make up 30% of the applicant pool and they still make up 31% of the students, they're still overrepresented, even if in a non-discriminatory environment, they would have made up 40 or 45 or more. Is that really what I'm hearing?
That is how we interpret the rule, and that's also how Justice Alito has interpreted it in his dissents in both this case and the Coalition for TJ case, when he urged the court to grant our petitions for cert in those cases. In the Coalition for TJ dissent, he had a particularly illuminating hypothetical about a high school basketball team where, if you imagine, there are only white and black players, and the team has a substantial majority of black players, but the school district is majority white. One could say, could adopt a policy based on a geographic or a middle school quota that would reduce the number of black players, but perhaps not, you know, to the point where they would be underrepresented. But the explicit target, the explicit purpose of such a policy would be to reduce the number of black players. And under the First and Fourth Circuit rule, as we see it and as Justice Alito sees it, that would not be discrimination based on race, so it would not be enough to trigger strict scrutiny unless the proportion of black players fell below their proportion of the district. And I think if you look at that, this is a matter of common sense, you can see that that is an instance, that would be an instance of racial discrimination where it's the portion that the criteria being used was a clear proxy for race in that situation. And the same thing was true, in our view, in both the Boston and the TJ cases.
Yeah, that does seem pretty wild to me. Now, you mentioned that Justice Alito wrote a dissent. So talk about the process of taking the First Circuit opinion, filing a petition for certiorari. I know you were relisted a couple of times, maybe giving you a little bit of optimism, but then ultimately, last Monday, denied with this, not only one dissent from denial, joined by Justice Thomas, but then also a statement from Justice Gorsuch. Talk through the process of filing a petition, maybe hoping for cert, and then getting the ruling last Monday.
So we thought we had a pretty good chance at getting cert in this case because of the way the First Circuit opinion was structured in the sense that the First Circuit essentially acknowledged that there was intent to, you know, to readjust the racial makeup of the exam schools and about the three members that expressed animus. And so that, we thought that would really isolate the issue of, you know, how do you calculate or what's the relevance of disparate impact in this analysis? And we have a few theories on that in the sense that Arlington Heights actually doesn't say that disparate impact is even necessary to demonstrate discriminatory intent. And even if you assume that it is, you know, we have our theories about how you calculate it that are different from what the First Circuit had said. And then you also had our Second Circuit case, where it is a similar challenge to racial, a race-based decision to expand the so-called discovery program for admission to the New York City Specialized High Schools, including Stuyvesant and Bronx Science. And in that case, we had lost in the district court on disparate impact. And then the Second Circuit reversed and said that, no, you actually don't need to even show aggregate disparate impact to win in Arlington Heights' claim. It's enough to show that there was a racial purpose and that there were individuals of the particular racial group that were adversely affected. And so we thought that that set up a clear circuit split with Boston and TJ. And so when we wrote our petition, well, this happened after the petition was actually filed. So we added supplemental brief on that. But when we wrote our petition, we focused on the disparate impact issue specifically and tried to give the court a very narrow issue to grant and thought we were pretty optimistic, especially after the circuit split came down and then we filed our supplemental brief. Unfortunately, we ended up in the same sort of pattern we ended up in TJ, where there were a bunch of relists. I think we were relisted six or seven times. And to the point where you get relisted six times, you kind of start thinking, well, it's probably going to be a dissent from denial. There aren't very many cases, there are some, but there aren't many cases that get granted after they're relisted that many times. So at that point, we were kind of expecting that Justice Alito was writing another dissent.
Yeah, talk about the statement respecting denial from Justice Gorsuch.
Well, I mean, I was disappointed that he sort of took the mootness arguments that the respondents, the school committee had been making since we were in the First Circuit and used that as a reason that he did not vote to grant. I think, well, so our clients, we had 14 students who were named in the complaint, and they were sixth graders at the time the admissions policy went into effect. And so they were applying for seats in the seventh grade, which is the normal process. And so after the district court ruled against the coalition, that was it. The admissions policy then went into effect, and five of the students were denied admission despite the fact that they had GPAs that would have gotten them in had there been a citywide competition without the zip code quota. So when we appealed, we explicitly said that we were seeking that remedy for those five students to be admitted to the exam schools. And not, obviously, you can't enjoin something that has already happened. So we were not seeking to continue to get an injunction on the zip code quota as a whole, but a remedy for those particular students. And in the First Circuit, the court said we did have standing to continue to seek that remedy. But Justice Gorsuch unfortunately said that the fact that it was a one-year policy and then it was ultimately changed, and I may add that the current policy is not, you know, free from any suspicion. But we were, you know, litigating the policy that existed in 2021 and 22. But he said that because it was a one-year policy and because these, and it was questionable to him whether any remedy might be granted, that that's why he didn't vote to grant, even though he shared Justice Alito's view of the merits. So in one way, it's heartening that we had three justices who agree with us on the merits. And one might think that perhaps if there were a fourth, Justice Gorsuch might have come along. But I can't speculate as to that, so.
Yeah, it is a strange brand of mootness because, yes, the policy is over, but it's not technically moot in the sense that the court couldn't issue something that would have a real-world effect, as you point out, the remedy that you're asking for could still happen. So Justice Gorsuch wasn't saying, oh, the case is moot. He's saying the fact that it's over makes the need for my review less. And that's a strange thing to see in a Supreme Court opinion, maybe even giving a roadmap to people who have prevailed below to avoiding review. Just go ahead and change the policy. Did you think through what the effect of that type of statement in Justice Gorsuch's opinion might be going forward?
I mean, we were certainly always worried about the effects of mootness in our cases, especially in these K through 12 cases, because often students will age out and then you can't get a remedy for them anymore because they're not eligible for whatever benefit they could have gotten in the first place. I think, I don't think it worries me that much going down the road because, for the most part, I mean, he didn't say that the case was moot. And this is, so it's not going to affect the large majority of litigation where we have this issue because we've come across this issue all the time when the policy gets adjusted. And it makes it difficult, but as Justice Alito pointed out, there are ways around that in terms of nominal damages and other remedies that can be sought. I just think when it comes to getting a cert grant, the default position is to deny cert. And so that's why when you read briefs in response to petitions, like the school committee's brief in this case, they kind of adopt a throw everything at the wall sort of strategy where one of the things they threw at the wall was that, wait a second, you're just challenging something that happened two years ago, and why does the court need to get involved in this? And there doesn't really need to be much justification to deny cert. So it's, I think that was working against us.
Now, you mentioned that you have this, a version of this case in the Second Circuit that is proceeding. Will you be able to take the opinion that Justice Alito published, one by Justice Thomas, and use it at all in that Second Circuit case as an example of the fact that there are Supreme Court justices who are expressing this view that it's unconstitutional?
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, in the Second Circuit, the rule is going to be much more favorable to us going forward because of what the Second Circuit said in that case about disparate impact. Because in that case, the percentage of Asian Americans who are getting into the specialized high schools is well above their proportion of the applicant pool. But nevertheless, there's strong evidence that the program that we're challenging was altered to reduce their proportion of admitted students. So I think the Justice Alito dissent is just going to add to our ammunition in the district court when we do go back on remand. But even under the Second Circuit rule, I think we can show, I mean, we can show disparate impact the way it is. And then I think what really, what becomes the interesting point is if we were to go up and actually win after another, we have another round of discovery that's going to happen now because the district court bifurcated discovery in that case. So we only had discovery on impact, which is another sort of byproduct of this understanding of Arlington Heights, where you have to show impact as a prong of, or an element of discriminatory intent claim as opposed to just one factor. But because the Second Circuit then vacated that decision, now we all go back and have discovery on intent. And if we were to win and then go up to the Second Circuit and win, it would be interesting to see if New York, the city, would seek cert and there would, there would, there's a circuit split outstanding. So there's plenty of other ways for this issue to get back up.
You know, one intuition I have, and I'll be curious to hear what you think about this, is that the Supreme Court justices want this issue to percolate more because it's actually somewhat hard for them to conceive of what line to draw. You know, we have some law schools getting rid of the LSAT in order to, you know, create racial diversity, or some colleges getting rid of the SAT because they think that that's, you know, part and parcel of creating racial diversity after SFFA. And I think the Department of Education under Biden has said that those sorts of things don't count for strict scrutiny, even after SFFA. If you're just making decisions in order to avoid disparate impacts or create racial diversity, that those don't have the same status as direct racial preferences or direct racial discrimination. Do you think it's hard for justices to draw a line between broad things like getting rid of the LSAT or getting rid of the SAT and direct racial discrimination? And that's why they're avoiding the need to weigh in?
I think it is a very difficult line to draw, and it's something that we've been, that we have been faced with in a lot of these cases. Like, for example, in TJ, one of the things that the school board argued was, there was all sorts of changes to the admissions policy besides what the ones that we emphasized. One of them was getting rid of the application fee from $100 to make it free. And one of the things they said was, this is going to increase the number of Black and Hispanic applicants. And they said, you think that's discriminatory just because it's going to increase the number of Black and Hispanic applicants? And so it really becomes necessary to respond to something like that because the common sense view of that is, of course, it's not discriminatory to get rid of the application fee for everyone. If you're only getting rid of it for certain racial groups, then that's a different thing. But if you're getting rid of it for everyone, I don't think people would argue that that's racial discrimination. But you have to come up with a reason why that doesn't fit within the rule that we're advocating for. And so we have focused strongly on sort of objective academic factors and when they create differential cutoffs for admission. So getting rid of the LSAT, for instance, would be on one side saying like, well, as long as you're still treating everyone equally in the applicant pool, LSAT or not, maybe that's not going to be enough, although we wouldn't rule it out. I mean, it's just saying, when you're trying to craft a rule, you have to think about what goes on one side and what goes on the other. But in our cases, like in Boston and TJ, you could see in the data the discriminatory effect of this because if you were in a certain zip code in Boston, for instance, in West Roxbury or in Chinatown, you needed a much higher GPA to get into the exam schools than if you were in different zip codes. And that directly correlated with the percentage of white and Asian applicants from those zip codes. And that's exactly how the plan worked. So in that case, you had students who were not being treated equally because the same GPA was different depending on which zip code you lived in. And the same was true in TJ with the middle school set aside that they used. The same GPA and the same scores would not be the same, treated the same if you went to one middle school versus another one. And that, those are the differential cutoffs that I try to, I try to distinguish those from things like getting rid of the application fee or even getting rid of the test, the I S E E, in the Boston case, which although we were not a part of the case when it was filed, I took the case over on appeal. The coalition never challenged getting rid of the I S E E in that case. The only challenge was to get rid of, the only challenge was to the zip code quota because that was what, and we compared it to a citywide competition where it was only GPA. And you could see that under a citywide competition where GPA was the only factor, an objective academic factor, that Asian and white students would have done much better under that plan. And it's something that is, you can clearly see the differential treatment. So I think that is the line that we were advocating. I do think it is, it is definitely plausible to say that the court is worried about what line they would draw because they don't want to say that anytime you say anything about diversity, that's going to be strict scrutiny. I think that's not probably the correct rule. But I do think that our cases are pretty comfortably on the other side of the line. But that's, you know, my view.
What if you, what if you didn't have the smoking guns and the school just said, well, we want to adopt a zip code quota because we like geographic diversity? And they could establish that their race was not part of the analysis? Would that, that would just be safe? That would be rational basis?
That's a difficult thing about Arlington Heights is that you can adopt the same policy but depending on the record, it could be constitutional in one aspect and unconstitutional in a different application. So, yeah, if there was a, I believe this is how it would work if the purpose truly was geographic diversity and you couldn't show that that was a pretext. So for example, there were ways in both Boston and TJ to show that their reported concern with geographic diversity. To show that uh their reported concern with geographic diversity um really was not uh what they were after. Um because, for example, in TJ, there was one instance where uh you had um. A debate over whether they were going to use uh base middle school um attendance zones or attending middle school zones. And the attending schools, uh that was where a bunch of uh high achieving students who were mostly Asian American. Had gone from their home middle school to a few very highly competitive middle schools that had advanced coursework. And so if you use attending middle school, you would get less geographic diversity because. You wouldn't get any kids from this the areas where those kids left. Um but you would get more racial diversity and fewer Asian Americans because it would be harder for those kids who went to those. Difficult middle schools to get in under the quota. And they chose to use attending middle school, which which in our view demonstrated. That their concern with geographic diversity was a pretext for racial discrimination. Um and so. Uh I I think that if a record was clear that that what they were really looking for was something other than race uh. And they didn't really consider race and they didn't really uh and they didn't uh do the modeling. Uh for race, then I think you could prevail on that uh as a school board uh under our theory. Uh but uh in in practice, I mean, all of these cases that we have done, there's been substantial evidence that. The real goal here was racial balancing.
We do have a couple of questions rolling in. If you've got a question, go ahead and drop it in the Q and A box. I'm going to ask one or two more and then we'll turn it over to the the Q and A. Um so I mean, imagine a school spends. Its recruitment budget, a hundred percent of its recruitment budget on recruiting uh non-whites. In inner city areas uh but of course, doesn't change its application process. And that instance, I think your rule would not apply because the school isn't. Changing its admissions criteria in order to racially balance its. Attendance, I I guess you might say it's it's two love two proxies removed, even though its intent is clear. So the school wouldn't have a equal protection problem in a scenario where it's not actually making admissions decisions like that. Is that right?
I'd say it would be more difficult to show uh racial intent in that case. I'm not sure I would rule out being able to show it. I I I mean, I don't want to rule that out. Uh but I think um I think that changing the criteria is obviously more of a for first order problem. Uh and there are certainly ways that you could increase the percentage of kids, the number of kids from a black black and Hispanic kids who apply. Um without um discriminating on the basis of race. One of the one of those ways. Well, that a bunch of school districts have tried for gifted programs is universal screening. Uh so where everybody has to take the test during school hours uh rather than have it be a parent initiated process. And that will always result in a more diverse applicant pool. Um but uh that's not discriminating against anyone. Because everyone still has the opportunity to take the test. Um and they're just giving people, they're just giving more people the opportunity to take the exam. Um so I think in in New York, they've tried things like that where they made this the test, the Shazat in New York um. Uh available during school hours uh instead of coming in on Saturdays. And so. Uh something like that, I think, would be uh I I think would be very difficult to show that that was racially discriminatory. Yeah, I don't think anyone would even really want to try to show that. Um something like spending. All of your money on recruiting specific kids based on race to apply would be a little more difficult. Um I think you can have a citywide program where you're you're encouraging kids to apply and that might have a result. And that results in more black and Hispanic kids proportionally applying because they're they're they may be more marginal to apply. Um like the most um if if you take the theory of the the most motivated students apply no matter what. And then everyone else applies marginally, perhaps you get more proportionally black and Hispanic students to apply if you. Uh even go citywide and say, like, make a big push to get people to apply to these schools. Um and that wouldn't be a problem. But I think if you did a resource um allocation that was blatantly. You know, for a racial group, I think that might be more of a problem. Uh again, these are lines that really haven't considered as much because they haven't come up in our cases, but they are arguments that the other side has made. In the sense that when they try to peg our position as if you say diversity, you get strict scrutiny. And I don't see that as our position.
Got it. Well, let's uh let's go to the Q and A here. The first question relates to our conversation about how. Uh this case was relisted a few times and an anonymous attendee says. What does it mean to be relisted and what uh indicators are there when something is relisted more than once?
Um so when the Supreme Court um conferences on the Friday, uh each Friday when they have a conference. They usually consider hundreds of cert petitions. Um and for the most part, those cases all get denied in one sentence orders. Uh and only a handful will either get granted or what's called relisted. And when they're relisted, that means that the the court has just held the case over to consider it at the next conference. Uh with its next batch of cases. And so typically, what court watchers note is that when a case is relisted one time. That shows the court is interested in the case. It doesn't necessarily show that the case will be granted. But it's a much higher chance that the court will be granted, grant the case if it's relisted once. Now, if it continues to be relisted and continues to be considered at at conferences two, three, four, or five times. Eventually, the the assumption becomes that one justice or two are writing a dissent. Or some sort of statement uh about the the petition because there aren't enough votes to grant. Now, in some cases, um you get a late grant. I believe um we at PLF had once had a case that was relisted five times that was granted. And I think the the record is fourteen relists before.
It's masterpiece, right? Masterpiece was fourteen.
We I believe, yeah. Uh so um so it is possible. Uh we don't really know what happens in those fourteen conferences for masterpiece. Um but um generally speaking, one or two relists. Is a good sign uh that the court is considering your case. Normally, the court doesn't grant cert without relisting a case first. Uh it happens sometimes, but uh typically, one relist is is the normal. Um and then, once it gets to three or above, you start considering the possibility that someone's writing a dissent and it's just taking. A few weeks to to circulate the dissent around. And that I think is what happened in our case, so.
Another question from uh another anonymous attendee. How much of this cert denial in your case has to do with the lack of appetite for another big ruling? Uh on race. So we just had last year the SFFA decision. The court might want to let that decision sit a little bit before coming back in for another. Case where it might have to spend political capital on a hot button issue like race. Um is that your intuition or do you think there's something else going on?
I I mean, I I'm hardly the most qualified person to address this. I I I mean, I've never clerked at the court, so I don't really know exactly how. How this works, but um it's possible for sure. Um I I think your point earlier about how. Uh they might want to see this issue percolate more um is another uh just they just want to see more lower court opinions on it. Um and we do, you know, have the New York case. We also have a case in Maryland uh that's pending at the Fourth Circuit. That could address the same disparate impact issue. Um but um yeah, otherwise, I I real, I mean. There's there's a thousand reasons the court might deny cert and uh so it's a lot easier to come up with a reason to deny cert than it is to come up with a reason to grant cert. Um and so I I mean, I'm really not, um I I I'm not really qualified to uh to.
Just to be clear, the Coalition for TJ case, the Fourth Circuit case with similar facts, that was before SFFA. I think it was like May of twenty twenty-three. The First Circuit opinion in the Boston case, that was after SFFA?
Correct, yeah. I mean, the the cert was denied in TJ after SFFA, but the Fourth Circuit opinion uh came out before. Um and then even in that case, there was an earlier Fourth Circuit opinion um on uh uh. The boards, because we had won that case in the district court uh on summary judgment. Uh and then the. The board sought uh emergency relief and a stay in the Fourth Circuit. That opinion came out well before SFFA. Uh and this disparate impact theory that now has been adopted by both circuits was originally in Judge Heightens' concurrence. To the stay grant. And then we went up to then we went up to the Supreme Court in that case uh for an emergency relief from the stay. And actually, we got three votes, including Justice Gorsuch uh on that. But um. Then then it went back to the Fourth Circuit and we lost. And then we all know what happened after.
Another question from uh anonymous attendee. Um you mentioned that the school policy has changed after a couple of years. Is that because there was a change in the demographics of the zip codes? Uh and so the school decided, oh, we better. Adjust our policy again because we're not getting the right racial makeup that we want. And then I I guess the the corollary to that question is. What do you do if a school changes its policy every two years? How do you how do you bring a lawsuit over those policies if they're rapidly shifting?
It's very difficult. And we had that situation happen in Montgomery County uh when we had actually won on a motion to dismiss. Uh we we defeated the the district's motion to dismiss in that case in a in a very similar challenge to magnet middle school admissions policies. And then um right, uh they changed the policy ostensibly because of COVID. And we essentially went back to square one and then we lost um on on the new admissions policy. Um there's there's a couple of ways to handle that, um including seeking nominal damages, um like Justice Alito pointed out. Um but um so that I think that would be probably the clearest way of doing it. Or, you know, we always make sure when we have a client. Uh that's an organization to have usually multiple years of of kids. Who are gonna uh be going through the system to keep standing over a substantial period of time. Uh but it it definitely complicates the process because you don't want to seek an injunction against a policy that no longer exists. You have to actually, you know, win against the policy that exists. And if you want to get actual relief. Uh so it's a kind of an ongoing um battle in in that front. As to why they changed the policy in Boston, um. The zip code plan was always supposed to be kind of a stopgap, I think. Uh but uh our. My clients, the members of my client coalition, they they kind of think that it was changed in response to. Our litigation, but I'm I'm not uh I'm not so sure about that. Um. The the plan that they have adopted now actually is um substantially worse for white students um than the zip code quota. Uh they the white students are actually getting admitted at lo- uh a lower rate than their their share of the applicant pool now. Um but uh it the three uh members of the 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 school committee that. Um prompted the racial animus finding, you know, they resigned because of their racist text messages and comments. So they were not on the committee uh when they adopted this new policy. Uh so any potential challenge, which I'm not going to speak to, uh would would have to deal with that. Um but as far as disparate impact goes, what they've changed it to is uh now they use these socioeconomic tiers. Uh instead of zip codes. And so each Boston neighborhood census tract, actually not neighborhood, so they're smaller. Uh each census tract is put into a tier based on socioeconomic factors like poverty rate, share of two-parent households and things like that. Uh and if you're in tier eight, which is the the tier with the the highest socioeconomic status. Um it's very difficult to get in. Uh whereas if you're in tier one, it's almost guaranteed that you get in. It's the the numbers are actually quite stark. Um. So that's that's the new plan. Um and I I do think that um you know, we we were obviously not uh. Uh because this case was so far along, uh there was really no utility to challenging the new plan while this case was going on. Uh and if we were to have gotten a cert grant, that would have, in our view, affected the constitutionality of the new plan as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh if you do have a question, go ahead and drop it in the Q and A box. We do have a few more minutes and also a few more questions. Uh in the queue, Francis Choudry asks, is the First Circuit opinion so broad? That suppose they adopted different examinations um in order to get into this school based on geography. Uh kind of roughly matching the racial demographics of the city. So. Uh a difficult examination in West Roxbury, but an easier examination in Dorchester. Uh and obviously, that would be evidence of race, but is the First Circuit opinion so broad? That it doesn't really matter if you're using proxy factors and not directly discriminating based on race?
Yes, the way I read it is that as long as the proportion of the students targeted, the groups targeted, doesn't. Fall below their proportion of the applicant pool, it actually doesn't matter how much intent you have because um. If you read the First Circuit opinion uh in the part where they address our sixty B motion, uh well, not um they. Uh the the court says the additional racist text messages wouldn't have changed the outcome. Because they already had a lot of evidence of intent. The problem was impact. Um and so um. The way I read the opinion is that, yes, I mean, even if you did something outrageous like that, as long as it did not. Uh result in the proportion of. Um Asian Americans or white students uh falling below their portion of the applicant pool. That that would not be enough to trigger strict scrutiny.
Next question, another anonymous question. What what potential for um exploitation? Uh is there in the Boston policy, for instance, could students strategically? Put their address down as a church in one of these favored geographic areas or or maybe buy a small apartment, I don't know, in. In this area. And does it does that? Are are these schools so prestigious that that would actually happen? And this is more of a practical question than a legal question, but do you know often whether any exploitation is going on?
Well, as far as the zip code quota, it was only in effect for one year, so there wasn't really any any time for that. Um. The the tier system is based on residence, not school attendance for the most part, although there are some bonus points. That you can get for attending a school that is uh more than forty percent um dis economically disadvantaged. Um so that's a small part of it, but um so, yeah, I mean, it's like any policy that's based on residence. Uh including zone schools, like this happens in in New York. Uh where I'm originally from, I I've heard of instances where students, you know, lie about their address to get into a better public school. Because they don't have, there's no school choice in in New York. Um and I'm sure that that can also happen in terms of like someone who's in West Roxbury. Buying an apartment in Dorchester and then claiming that as their their residence to say that they're in tier three or whatever. Um that that certainly could happen. I mean, Boston Latin School is has always been considered one of the best high schools in America. Uh and so although you one has to look at uh who's getting in at the in the current. Policy in terms of how it's not exactly as difficult to get in as it used to be. Um I don't know how that's going to change the reputation of the school in in the long run. Uh the fact that it's. It's it's very easy to get an invitation to one of the exam schools under the tier system if you live in tiers one through through five. Um I don't know how that's going to affect. I mean, I'm not even talking about and just in terms of, you know, if you live in a certain neighborhood. You're and and the the test that's being used now is not is not a test that's typically used to identify gifted students. It's the map, uh the measure of academic progress, which is a grade level achievement exam. Um so it's not quite the same as the ISEE. Um so I don't know in the future, but certainly in the past. Boston Latin School has been one of the most prestigious schools in America, and I'm sure there are a lot of people who would try to game the system to get in. But.
Uh a next next question, again, last last opportunity, if you have a question, drop it in the Q and A box. Uh I think this relates to the mismatch effect. So there's commonly a a theory by Professor Rick Sanders saying. That in the affirmative action context, if you change the standards for admission. You'll have a mismatch effect such that people who wouldn't have otherwise gotten into a school getting in. And then they have worse outcomes. They might get a lower GPA, they might even drop out. And so ultimately, the effect of the policy is to the detriment of the people who get the preference. Do you expect there to be a mismatch effect in cases like this or the Coalition for TJ case? Where you might see more dropouts um or other ba- uh you know, negative outcomes for the people who benefit from. The geograph- the geographic preference or the the proxy um in a way that actually hurts these individuals who. The school is trying to use for their diversity purposes.
I don't know the numbers, so the the specific question about have there been more dropouts at TJ, I I don't know. I think probably our client. Um the Coalition for TJ probably has been following this, but I I don't I don't know the numbers, but I mean, I suspect. That this is going to be a problem on both ends uh at all of these schools. For example, I mean, like, look at um New York City. Under the Discovery Program, which is a program that we were challenged, that the expansion of which we are challenging, uh that. Uh is for uh low-income students who scored just below the cutoff for admission to any of the specialized schools. Who then have a chance to go to and uh the 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 highest school that they uh. who then have a chance to go to any, uh, the, the, the highest school that they, uh, they, they ranked in the ranked choice admissions. So for instance, at Stuyvesant, where the admissions uh cutoff is extremely high, I mean, the numbers aren't, aren't going to make any sense, but I think the numbers are usually around five sixty for the test. Uh, and then uh, the cutoff is like four eighty-five for getting into any of the schools. So you're looking at eighty percent of Stuyvesant's class being kids who scored in the five fifties, five sixties or higher. And then another twenty percent being kids who scored below four eighty-five. And so you kind of have a, which four eighty-five is a pretty decent score on the Shazat, but when you look at comparing that kid who scored four eighty-five to students who scored in the five sixties, I mean, you have to think it's going to be difficult for those students to keep up with the coursework at Stuyvesant. And I think similar at TJ, although I don't know if it's as stark, but um similar, um, because you don't, and then as far as the school is concerned, you know, TJ was famous for the fact that they offered things like multi-variable calculus to high school seniors, which you usually would have to go to dual enrollment at a university to do that. Uh, is, are they going to still be able to do that if, um, not all the kids are getting in through this rigorous exam like they used to? Um, I don't know. In the future, that's going to be something that, um, I would note that TJ was ranked number one in the uh US News and World Report rankings for a couple of years before we, you know, before the policy was changing. It's now fallen. It's in like the fifteens or twenties now. I don't know if that's, I, I don't necessarily endorse US News's ra- rankings methodology. I'm just saying that that's what's happened.
Yeah. All right. We'll make this the last question uh from Jay Smith um regarding, I guess, the incoming administration in January, especially with Harmeet Dillon uh potentially being the um head of the civil rights team at DOJ. Is there an opportunity for the federal government to weigh in here to try to challenge some of these policies? Given that the First Circuit and the Fourth Circuit have already ruled, um, and do you see perhaps the DOJ having more success if they did bring a suit than um what we've seen so far with the Supreme Court?
I mean, certainly it never hel- hurts to have the federal government on your side. Um, so uh if it's true that OCR is going to have more, um, uh, interest in these cases, uh, we would, we would welcome that. Uh, I don't know if it's going to change the outcome because ultimately the courts are going to be responsible for how this gets interpreted. Um, but I mean, I do think uh we could get better outcomes in terms of, you know, how OCR is interpreting the Title VI disparate impact regulations and things like that. Um, it certainly is going to have a positive effect. I'm not sure that it's going to be able to reverse the uh outcome of the First and Fourth Circuit opinions, um, you know, in these cases. Um, but uh it's a good thing uh as far as uh our clients are concerned.
Well, thank you so much, Chris, for talking to us today uh about the Boston Parent Coalition case. Sad to have the denial of cert sure, but glad to have the statement of Justice Alito and Justice Thomas on the record. And then obviously good news about the Second Circuit case on this theory proceeding. Um, thank you to all of our attendees today. Thank you to the folks who submitted questions. And of course, thank you to Chris. Uh, with that, Mark, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, and I want to thank you both for that fantastic discussion and the benefit of your time and expertise today. On the behalf of the Federal Society, I would also like to thank you, our audience, for joining us. We greatly appreciate your participation. For more in- information on upcoming events, please visit our website or all major social media platforms at Fedsoc. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you all.